Let me call the meeting to order. This is a Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, August 23rd, 2020, having called the meeting to order. I'd like to ask Councilmember Corium Booker, if you would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation for council. Please join us by standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Father, thank you for this day and thank you for this time coming together as council body. Lord, ask you just to give us the knowledge and the motivation to do what's fair and equitable for everyone in this great city. Father, continue to help us to prosper as we go through these perilous times of uncertainty. And, Lord, we just thank you for everything you're doing in the city of Greer, in the state of South Carolina. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public form this evening?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council, before you are the minutes from the council meeting on August the 9th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council departmental reports are contained in your packet as well. If you have any questions in regards to those, Mr. Merriman or department heads will be glad to assist you with those. Ms. Howell joins us for our financial activity report this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll give you a brief summary of our July statements, July 2022. Beginning with the general fund, we have a year-to-date revenue of $616,000, year-to-date total expenditures of $1,679,000, which is 1% under budget. The cash balance in the general fund is $15,656,000. And then referring to the dashboards where we compare actuals to benchmarks, we do have a positive overall variance of $239,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $287,000, the year-to-date expenditures are $1,000, and the cash balance in the account is $2487,000. Lastly, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $6,726,000. There are no expenditures this month, and the cash balance in the stormwater fund is $2236,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor is open for questions.
This is to the end of July, right? So that's the first month.
Yes, first month fiscal year. Yes, sir.
How, on the hospitality?
Yes, sir.
Revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Are we where, in that July, the first month, are we, where we budgeted?
We're...
Spark revenue?
We are a little above.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I think we budgeted 200 and... I have my glasses. 248, 247,000, and we actually had 287,000. So we're doing great.
Others? Questions? Comments? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your time. Administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you and good evening. This last weekend, the police department hosted out at Century Park their annual law enforcement memorial softball tournament. This fundraiser includes teams made up of first responders from across the upstate, and it goes to support law enforcement officers and their families. And we thank them all for their service in this annual tournament. It's actually been very successful, and we're really proud of it. The second thing is Kids Planet, as a reminder, is currently closed for irrigation and landscaping work. The playground will be open this Sunday, but it's going to close again in the middle of next week as we complete work. The upper parking lot will be closed. Let's see, excuse me, let me make sure I got this right. Work will also begin this week on the upper parking lot, yes, at Century. So visitors will be directed to the lower parking lot and overflow lot for the next three to four weeks. So again, for nearly a month, those folks that frequent Kids Planet, be sure to go looking for parking on the lower lot and the overflow lot. Registration has been extended for our civics academy. This free program begins on September 15th. So make sure you go to our website if you're interested in this program. It's actually been very successful in the past, and we're hoping to get more of our citizens that are interested in how local government works involved. Excuse me. Our free concert series continues August 27th. Show starts at 6:00, where we will host the Mighty Kicks in the amphitheater. And one more reminder that on Monday, September 5th, city offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Mr. Mayor, that is all that I have on my administrator's report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to entertain them at this time.
Thank you, sir. Council, with that, let's move to items of old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 43-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property and a portion of a property, a 10-foot strip owned by Limm Holdings LLC located on Old Highway 14, East Phillips Road by 100% petition. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to the second reading of ordinance number 43-2022?
Just that the planning commission held a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval.
For the purpose of discussion, it comes with a recommendation from the planning commission to hear a motion to receive. So moved.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. And the second matter of old business pertaining to the first, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number 44-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by Winker Incorporated located on East Phillips Road by 100% petition and to establish its own classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty, any new or additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 44-2022?
Planning Commission also held a public hearing for this case last Monday and recommended approval.
Comes with recommendation or approval from staff to hear a motion to receive. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Let's move to items of new business, the first of which is the purchase of holiday pole decorations for the city of Greer. Ms. Ann Cunningham, our Director of Parks Recreation and Tourism, is here to give us an overview of possible new decorations for our poles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city of Greer Parks Recreation and Tourism Department budgeted in the capital equipment fund to purchase holiday pole decorations in fiscal year 2223. And we'd like to purchase 50 tree pole decorations that are customized with glitter mesh and LED lights. These unique decorations will complement the pole decorations that were purchased last year and are proprietary to one manufacturer, and they're made in the United States. The quoted price of $40,000, excuse me, $83.44 exceeds the purchase amount threshold that requires city council's approval and is less than the approved budgeted amount for this purchase. Staff is requesting approval to proceed with purchasing the proposed pole decorations, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Are questions to Ms. Cunningham?
Ms. Cunningham, can you remind me, I know, you know, remember in last year when we purchased some, I remember our older decorations were quite old.
Yes, sir.
Are we, are we replacing those kind of in waves? Is that the reason for a couple of years in a row?
Well, COVID had a lot to do with it, as far as a lot of materials we couldn't get in time. When our lease purchase is open, you know, comes available in August, you know, excuse me, it gives us a little bit of time, very little time, to purchase. So we kind of have to plan ahead for that. And again, we just couldn't get the materials. But again, these, the decorations that we chose are made in North Carolina. So, and we thought that was important. We wanted to go with, you know, certainly a manufacturer in the United States if that was possible. But as far as the shooting stars will be, we will mix those in with what we're calling their little Christmas trees. They're made with the same glitter mesh and LED lights. They're green and red and yellow, and I think they'll look very pretty.
Does this round out the replacement that we're hoping to do?
Perhaps. We may look at adding another. It's just a matter of, I think, for them, it's the manufacturing of them. You know, they have so many, and there's so many different cities, I guess, and counties who are looking for decorations, so we kind of have to put our bid in pretty soon. So if you're pleased with them, then we'll stay, and if not, then we'll look at another option.
Others?
I'm glad that this round has more Christmasy trees, and that we, I received a good bit of feedback from, they were just concerned because we went from stockings and trees and poinsettias to just, you know, something they thought was a little more bland and so...
Right.
It's kind of, it's going back more traditional round.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I think you'll be pleased.
With the LED lights, they'd be a little bit brighter.
They'll be brighter than what we've had in the past, for sure. That, and the glitter mesh that we have, it's not, these decorations we've made specifically for us, to my knowledge, no other city or town are using these. We're having them made, they're actually outlined, and we're having them infield with this glitter mesh that we did with our shooting star. So it's going to be pretty unique to Greer. So we're pretty, hope you'll be happy with it, so I think it'll look pretty.
You mentioned that this was less than the budgeted number. Do you happen to know that number, how much it was?
The budgeted number was $100,000.
Okay.
And we're proposing 40, a little over 40,000. And again, that includes some brackets to replace as they rust out. We have to have replacements for those.
More questions of Ms. Cunningham? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance number 28-2022. This is an ordinance authorizing the closure of a portion of Parker Street. This request comes from Greer Mill LLC to permanently close a portion of Parker Street, which is a city-owned and publicly maintained roadway, which is adjacent to the property owned by Greer Mill LLC. Public hearing was held for the road closure at the city council meeting held on June 14th, 2022. Comes before us this evening for discussion. Mr. Merriman, any new or additional information in that regard?
No, sir. I know it's been, it's been a, I guess now two months since the public hearing was held, and the applicant, the developers of Greer Mill, have requested that this be brought to council for their consideration. So we brought it at their request before you now.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or a representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record will indicate no one appeared in that regard. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I've, I've made it fairly clear to these developers that in no way do I support the closure of this street. I think if indeed what they're planning there will increase traffic in the area, I think it's foolish to close any streets in that area. If they indeed need this small amount of parking to make their development successful, they need to go back to the drawing board. I do support if they would like to shift this street over and straighten it out and take a portion of it for their use as parking on that side of the street, that's fine. But I do not support closing the street at all. I think it puts the people that live beyond the mill at a great disadvantage, those two coming and going. And I met with these gentlemen, and I told them as such that I would not support this. I'd like to add, there's already limited ability to access the areas below the mill. CPW came to us 10 or 12 years ago, wanting us to close the lower portion of Bobo Street, I think it was, and we turned them down for that very reason, that it limited access to that area down there.
And also on Calvary Street, they wanted that end closed down as well, so they could do something when they're laid down. Turned that one down. I agree with, with those thoughts. If you, if we close a road and the project doesn't happen, and they've already done, and something's been done with the road, or we close the road, and I don't know who would retain ownership, but project doesn't happen, and now something else is coming in, we need the road. It's not, I don't think it would be a wise move to, it wouldn't be wise for all of our citizens, I think.
Further discussion?
On this particular situation, Andy, could you jog my memory? Because I remember there being, is this the one that had some utilities along this roadway portion?
Yes, sir, there are some utilities on this portion. Well, let me back up. If you'll forgive me, I'm going to refer to mine. Mr. Hughes and has a memo to that effect in our packet. Let me bring it back up just to make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn here. Pursuant to our requirements of Greer Code 78-11, we notified all public utilities that this was, this request was made, and I think from response standpoint, we did not get any response that there was concern.
Now, if this doesn't go through tonight, what's, what's their recourse? We just, they just have to go to the drawing board, or?
I, I don't think that, that this request failing before council has any direct effect on their ability to complete the project. What they were hoping for with the closure was an expansion of parking to complement the commercial portion of this development.
Do you know if they have any kind of plans, like engineered drawing plans? I mean, it really would help if we kind of had some circulation and context, if we closed, what it could look like in the...
They, they have submitted engineered plans showing the road closed and what that would look like as, as parking. But again, this is, you know, it was, it was tied to some discussions with, under a development agreement that is not going to come to fruition. So effectively, this is a project not unlike any other redevelopment project, is moving forward at this time without a development agreement. So therefore, the Parker Street closure would have been part of that development agreement, but at this time it's not.
Comments? Questions? Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
No.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Daner?
No. Council, let's move to third item before us this evening, which is the first reading of ordinance number 48-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property, excuse me, owned by JMK Properties of SC LLC located at 275 Genovale Road by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annexation request for one parcel. The next case is actually the adjacent parcel to the east, to the west, sorry about that. It is 1.57 acres. This is the current aerial view of the site. This council did recently annex in the piece adjacent to it that you'll see here in the lighter taupe color next to the blue. They do intend to combine, one, two, three, four, all four parcels and put a large industrial building on that site. This is the future land use map that shows mixed employment, and this is a current street view of the site. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you, sir, so noted. And if we have questions, are you available?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Floor is open for discussion.
Is Genovale Road, did we, most of that road was county road, correct?
Correct. We did, we did take in the portion that is in front of the taupe parcel that's on the screen. It's, the map is not updated yet, and we are proposing to take in the pieces along the frontage for these two parcels as well.
Is that one of the roads that we, we did some improvement on? The, the portion that we've annexed in, or is that?
I am not certain. We'd have to refer to Mr. Grant, the city attorney.
There was some work done either at a small water crossing or a utility crossing, but I think that new work was primarily related to the repair or to the, to the work that was done to address the utility situation or the water situation, one or the other. I don't know that we've done any expansion on the road, no. Anything you'd like to add to this discussion at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor, unless council has any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council Item 4 is the first reading of ordinance number 49-2022, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a certain property owned by FRK Properties LLC located at 237 Genovale Road by 100% petition and to establish its zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Ms. Cotty?
Sure. This is an annexation request for one parcel. Again, this is adjacent to the previous request, directly to the west. This parcel is approximately 3.78 acres. And again, the intention is to combine it with the three properties to its right and develop one industrial building on the site. This is the current zoning map. Again, the area is mostly zoned industrial. And then the future land use map, which is mixed employment. This is a current street view of the site, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? So noted. For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the project? Are they anticipated project? Is it going to be spec building, or what are you looking to do there?
If you would come to the podium, please, and state your name for the matter of the record.
Mayor and Council, my name is Mike Pitts with Parker Poe, 110 East Court Street, Suite 200, Greenville, representing the developer of the project. My understanding is it's going to be a large industrial building. I believe it is a spec building, and I believe there is a tenant at this time.
Questions? Comments? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. First reading of ordinance number 50-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Laura and Jorge Amaya Gorado located at 816 Sunnyside Drive from RM1 Residential to R5. Ms. Cotty, information in that regard, please?
Sure. This is an aerial view of the site. The property in question is located at the corner of Sunnyside Drive and Lorla Street. It is currently .3 acres. It is currently zoned RM1 residential multifamily. They are asking to rezone to R5 patio home or garden court, and for that reason, they'd like to subdivide and have two lots. And the survey that we have shows that each lot is a little over 6,600 square feet, which is a little smaller than the standard for RM1, which is 7,500. So this again is, sorry, this again is the current zoning map. The taupe kind of beige-ish color that you see on the site, the surrounding area is RM1. The darker brown color is RM2, and then the gold color is DRD with one parcel being S1 Service District. This is the future land use map, traditional neighborhood. This is a current street view of the site, and Planning Commission did hold a public hearing last Monday evening and recommended approval. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Record indicate no one spoke up. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Item 6 this evening is the first reading of the boards, number 51-2022, an ordinance to amend the city of Greer zoning ordinance by amending Section 8 signs in Section 7 Special Signs Standards subsection 6 outdoor menu boards. Ms. Cotty?
Sure. So over the past kind of six to eight months, we've seen several developments, redevelopment of restaurant, or old abandoned restaurant sites, as well as new construction of commercial. We've had probably four to five restaurants that are part of national chains that have a pre-menu board and then an actual ordering station, and they've said it's to help limit the queue in the line so that people can look at the menu further back, and then by the time they get to the station with the sign, they know what they want, and that helps them move through the drive-through quicker. There are several restaurants in Greer that currently do have the two signs that are either grandfathered in or were done before this ordinance. So we've taken a look at several site plans that have been submitted and have, staff does support changing the ordinance from having one menu board per drive-through aisle to two. Based on just some renderings that we've seen from signs that have been submitted for variance requests that, again, they put on hold once we let them know that we were going to do a text amendment, it seems like just increasing the overall square footage from 42 from the one sign to 52 square feet for a combined total seems adequate. So that is what we are proposing, again, to go from one menu board per kind of drive aisle to two, and then a combined total of 52 square feet increased from 42. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or questions?
Ms. Cotty, is this consistent with what, how things have gone in other areas, kind of across other geography?
It does seem to be. We, we looked in, in tailors and in other jurisdictions at recent restaurants that have gone in. I personally live in Simpsonville, and we just got a new Chick-fil-A, and they do, again, have that and a new Starbucks, and they both kind of have that pre-menu board and then the ordering station. So it does seem to be an industry standard that didn't seem to be harmful, so we were willing to kind of accommodate those requests.
As a grandfather who has been through hundreds of McDonald's drive-thrus, everywhere I've ever been, they've had one, the two, the two boards.
Questions? Comments? Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'll just make note that the city did receive a complaint from the Chick-fil-A in Simpsonville that Ashley held up the line by measuring their pre-menu board, but I'm glad to, glad to tell you that she's accurate.
With that, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, we have one matter for executive session. I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss a contractual matter pertaining to Pelham Batesville Fire Department as allowed by state statute section 30-470A2.
Ms. Duncan?
Do we have a second?
Oh, second. Thank you. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. For the purpose of discussion, we will stay in the room and ask others to leave. If you want to come back in, somebody will notify you when we're out of executive session.
Counsel, in executive session, we've considered one matter under state statute 30-4-70A2. We've taken no action in executive session. We will, as we come out of executive session, I'll entertain a motion that we come out of executive session.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, do we have any further business this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize yourself to execute a restated and amended agreement governing the annexation of certain real property by the City of Greer, the continuing provision of fire protection services in such areas by Pelham Batesville Fire District, the payment of fees for such services, and other related matters.
Is that one or all three?
I can keep going. I've got more.
That's the first one.
So can we do them one at a time?
Let's do them one at a time. Yeah. So with that, then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. And a second.
Well, I made the motion.
You made the motion. Excuse me, you made the motion. I just needed a second.
Second.
Got second from Mr. Bettis. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Other actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize yourself to execute an automatic aid agreement between the City of Greer and the Pelham Batesville Fire District.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, any further action this evening?
Mr. Mayor, one final motion. I'd like to make that to authorize our city administrator to offer a contract for sale and purchase of real estate to the Pelham Batesville Fire District.
Comes as a motion to hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have no further stated business this evening.